So obviously, I want to be first in line when that happens.
We budget that on the revenue side?
Yeah, I think we should probably just take out your elections bond phone. Does, you know, separate bond just to, or a rest expense.
So we'll have revenue in it.
Yep.
Hey, Jack, real quick, I accidentally left the, the first like two minutes. I accidentally left like the first two minutes of the straight heated, so just, so y'all.
Back up a little bit.
But well, that's up to y'all if you think you need to back up again or do whatever. I just wanted to throw that out.
So we're ready now?
Yes, sir. You should be level. Laura, that you just heard that was you.
I, I heard myself sound like.
I apologize to all of you.
Judge, if I may, may I ask a question to Heather?
Not yet.
Okay.
All right, let me, since we, we had an incident where we muted, we're gonna start over again. Court come to order, executive session. Court come to orders in public. This is a budget workshop agenda for the 2022 budget. Ms. Hawthorne?
Thank you, Judge. I am responsible as the county clerk for the elections of Chambers County. So in my 2022 budget request, I have asked for the equipment upgrade that is required by Senate Bill 598. The good news is that the state will reimburse the counties for this cost. So we will need to budget approximately five hundred and sixty thousand eight fifty-five. We could probably narrow that number down, Erin. Because this will be for January the first. Like everything else, you know, those quotes are only good for thirty days, so, but that's why I said approximately. So the court will know that the, the state is reimbursing for the cost of this equipment that we currently own to be upgraded. Any additions that we want to have would be a cost to the county. And at this time, I see no additional equipment as needed. We revved up a little bit in 2020 by purchasing an additional scanner for central counting as a backup, so we would not have any issues on election night with that. We also purchased, I believe, four or six additional pole pads for 2020 due to the turnout expected. So I believe we're good for 2022's primary and general election and not need an additional equipment next budget year at all.
So if you think this cost might go up, go ahead and approve it, put it in court, we approve it, tip for January one?
The, the hard deal.
The hard deal. And I can, I can reach out to Hart and make sure that that's their hard number so we can get it approved and I can get my.
Our telling look is what budget, and that's what we expect to have here.
Right, because obviously the early bird's gonna get the worm. My, my objective is as soon as the November election, the constitutional amendment election is over, is that we will get all of our equipment to Austin because of the fact that we're looking at a delayed primary because of redistricting, that we'll have this equipment in and out prior to the primary, so.
I mean, our budget said in October, we can start issuing PO while we don't get it.
For 2021.
For 2021, while we don't receive it before then, we could go ahead and issue it and we'll be.
For 2022, I'm sorry, Ms. But.
For 2020.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and so that, I mean, that they, that Hart would know that obviously that scope of work would be billed in 2022.
All right, here's some other questions. Is, is everybody in state gonna be doing the same thing? Do we need to go in and do it earlier?
Um, yeah, the bill has passed. I mean, it's been signed by the governor, so it is current law. They are giving us until September of 2022 for statewide to have this paper on.
So we don't have to have it for the next election? Doesn't that?
It, it, no.
Okay.
To answer your question, no, it doesn't have to be done by this coming November's election. The ideal would be is if we could at least get half of the equipment done now, August, September, October, November, because we don't have such a high turnout with the constitutional amendment election. And then swap out that, and we're really guaranteed to be in good shape by the primary. So just food for thought, you know, I'm, I'm gonna verify with Hart that that's that hard number and.
Ask him if we're doing now, if we're doing now. Can we get a reduction instead of waiting to do it?
Okay.
It might give us, you know.
And as far as procurement goes, Hart is, they were, I'll double check, they were a DIR contractor, it's one that we can use, one of, one of the co-ops. And the only other question I had, Heather, is existing stuff, can we surplus it? Is it gonna be?
Oh, no, 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 the good news, this is, this is equipment that we will take to them, they will retrofit.
There you go.
That's why you're talking about doing half of it.
Yes.
Okay.
That makes more sense now.
Sorry, guys.
Okay.
So we're gonna retrofit our existing equipment.
Yes, retrofitting the, the current equipment.
Yeah, originally we even thought we were gonna buy new.
Buy new, right.
Well, I just wanna ask you if this new equipment was made in, uh, made in.
America.
U.S., yeah.
Made in America.
Made in America.
Made in America.
Has to be.
So we'll follow up with that in the, in the next few days on the heart, but that would be the ideal situation. That bill goes into effect, Judge, on September first, as you know, like most bills go into effect, so. That would be ideal, is to get it to Hart, get half of it done, ready for the, and then take it after.
How long will it take him to retrofit?
It depends on what, so that's why I said I want to be first in line.
Yeah, I agree with that, because when they start getting backed up, it can be a lot.
Okay, you can get yourself in a bind.
I agree, I think we need to get half of them in now. So we have twenty machines? I think we do them all then. We're gonna get them all at one time. Why? Cause it's gonna leave us without any, in case you're not back for November.
Let me, let me, if they say it's a one week turnaround, then heck yeah, let's get it all, you know, but if they say it's a six week, eight week. I mean, right now, that would put me in a, too much of a panic. Our, our mail ballots for the constitutional amendment election go out in sixty-seven days, so we're already working on that.
Why don't you plan on putting something in the next call?
Okay, yeah. I'm, thanks.
All right, they may need some work right now.
They may need some work right now.
Yeah, that's what maybe, ten, so we might get some discount. Okay, go ahead.
And the other thing I'm asking for with elections is that we bring on another employee. As you well know, I took over the duties of the voter registrar on January first. And so we have been working very diligently on both sides of the election at this point. I'm gonna be very honest, as we grow and that department or that election cycles, we, we do the same, doesn't matter what, we plan for every election. And I feel, would feel all very comfortable having two employees know both the voter registration side and how to conduct an election. I think that's good business for us to have that both. There's more than enough work going on right now in that area. I, I, you know me, wouldn't ask if I didn't need it. It's been a lot of years in this building and.
You never have.
I don't ask, I don't need it. I, I need it this, this go around.
You don't know, you haven't been around that long. She's told me, I trust her.
I'm setting up the empire, remember what we always said? We're making it so the empire's easy to take over. So that would be a necessity, not a want, I mean, that, it's a need, not a want. And then, uh, I wanna raise my own stipend that I receive as an elections administrator. I'm still cheaper than hiring a full-time elections administrator. And I know that I deserve a higher stipend than what I'm currently receiving, especially taking over the duties of voter registration. So that's my elections request. Questions?
So your stipend now is like eighteen thousand, currently?
Fourteen.
Is that what I say? She's requesting fourteen additional.
Yeah, yeah.
Eighteen.
Eighteen now, okay. What did that seat for? That's what Thursday.
If she's asking, I won't turn my back.
I read the book. Yeah, I'm on it too.
I tried, that's my Twitter page, yeah.
If we're ready, we can move.
Go ahead, I don't think there's any questions.
Okay, and then, um, let's move on to the clerk's side. I really just need one employee. I, if you go back to what Tony was saying this morning on the growth of the county, again, through the years of, of maintaining a pretty steady workforce in my office. And unfortunately, the population has caught up to the clerk's office and we absolutely have to have another court personnel. I hate it. I know that creating the county court at law was gonna buy us some time as far as having one more for twenty and twenty-one. But I need an additional personnel for twenty twenty-two forward. And then on the employee raises, those are just totally up to the court and what you see fit for. If you're gonna do across-the-board raises, if you're going to do anything special on, on these three, I would ask that, of course, you would consider the first employee listed on the highest priority because the county clerk's office has gotten busy on the west side. She had to give up the duties of the district clerk on the west side. And with her giving up those duties, a stipend went with that. And so really, her salary's been cut for the remainder of this year. And so it's just, we could obviously get her compensated back to that next step so that, um, I mean, they work, they're workhorses over there as well. And of course, that's where two-thirds of the population is. That's all I have.
Easy.
Easy.
So does the stipend, does that? Is that kept separate from the salary?
Yeah, yeah, so on the, uh, less official schedule, we put in favor, break it out for every, that, that was a stipend. So Heather, there's a separate line. She's get this much money because of.
Well, to print that.
Okay, yeah, cause in payroll, it showed as her getting a cut in pay.
Oh, yeah, so.
I told my Christie, yeah.
Yeah, she did get a cut.
Oh, yes.
And that's why.
He thought you're done with Heather's stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And that, that was her stipend?
So she was receiving a stipend to take, to do the additional duties of the district clerk's office over there. It didn't warrant at the time having a full-time position. And so as a team player, I said, let's just see how this goes. We didn't know how it'd go. So she had, I believe at the time, a step or two that she got additional money for performing those duties. She said she can't do it all anymore and keep just two county clerk employees. So when she told Patty that, Patty said, well, you know, then that money comes back with, if you're not gonna do those duties, the money comes back to the district clerk's office, so.
He stole that quarter to go to the.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. And I appreciate, obviously, her honesty in saying, I can't do both any longer. Patty's office has definitely picked up over there because of the passport situation. Obviously, the courts are behind. So, but Christie couldn't do it. And I, and I'm glad she was honest to say, I can't do my job hundred percent either way.
And they get a lot of traffic down there.
All right, anything else?
Hey, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you for all you do in Austin, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
A pleasure, Thomas.
Greatly appreciate you.
Unless it was cookies you're bringing in that box, there's no need to bring that from.
I brought this way.
So who's next?
The county attorney.
ACL.
Thank you, judges and court.
I don't see you on this.
Page sixty-three. County court at law?
No.
No?
County attorney.
Oh, okay, page twenty-eight, no? Page twenty-eight, that's it.
Erin, you might want to add to the, this page number for the.
It's fair.
It's fair, Judge.
We just. He writes this.
Oh, I've seen that one.
If you, you'll have, they'll let it say.
Behind the general phone?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I knew it was all along ago, then I couldn't find it. So that's what I say, if you had it right there, then you would have to go to that extra step. You would have to go to the next step, but we wouldn't.
I think he could.
He can write it bigger, man.
Are y'all ready for me?
Uh, has everybody got it pulled up?
Do you mind if I stand before my opening argument? This is my place.
May I approach the bench?
I know, may I approach? I miss being in here. Can y'all see this though?
My gracious, you wrote a letter.
Yes, I did.
A book?
Okay, yes, a whole book, and I'll hurry. Don't let me know.
You're fine, Ann. Everybody good?
Yes, sir, we're ready.
Everybody ready, guys?
This is your, your.
Okay, two. What page is this again, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, thank y'all so much for the opportunity to speak with me today. I know y'all are probably tired of me because you've been dealing with me all day long. But I hope that you will enjoy my little presentation. I am definitely a visual learner, so that's what we're gonna do today. I did write a letter, like you mentioned. I hope that you had the opportunity to read it. If you haven't, I would urge you to please read it. Um, I really want you all to know what our office does. I'm very, very proud of my office. And I think that a lot of people in the county don't necessarily know what our office does. So it is in your packet, our office duties. We prosecute class A and D misdemeanors in county court, county court at law, as well as all of the JP courts. We also, and that includes filing these cases, doing intake, speaking with law enforcement, offering plea bargains. This is, is what we do. We also prosecute juvenile misdemeanors and felonies. We do jail pleas, we work with law enforcement, CCSO, DPS, Montpelview, Baytown, Barbers Hill, Parks and Wildlife. We also handle all of the public information for the entire county. So public information requests come into our office. We send that request to the other department. They send the information back, and then we redact or ask for opinions from the attorney general. We also do expunions and hearings for those. We do one court for dockets, Fisher's Court, which is my favorite, obviously. Contract review, victims options class, which I'll tell y'all about in a second. And we also do the Bridge Haven forensic interviews. This is a very broad overview of what we do. We have lots of tasks. And I know that I'm talking really fast, but I know you're all tired of me already today, so.
So, yeah, everything she said there at first, that's a big thing.
Sorry, Judge, my.
Was that Siri?
My watch started talking, can you say?
So, uh, everything she mentioned that comes, came off through county court for all these years, up until we got a county court at law, so.
Right.
That's just patting myself on the back. Hannah Clarkson.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
We're all patting ourselves on the backs.
Yes, I cannot say enough great things about the clerk's office, the judge's staff. This is not, obviously, I'm advocating for my office right now, but we don't do anything by ourselves. I do not leave the courtroom without thanking the judge's staff and the courts because that's who makes it run. Okay, so I want to talk about changes for twenty-nine, uh, twenty twenty-one. Obviously, if I'm gonna be asking for salary increases, which is all I'm asking for, is because there is some change. I'm looking at twenty nineteen because obviously twenty twenty was such a weird year. Since twenty nineteen, we have had a one hundred percent increase in court dates. If you flip it over, you'll be able to see that. Everything, I, I would love for y'all to look at this. It's also in your packet. If it's crossed out, that's not a workday. This is July twenty twenty-one, this is our actual calendar. Everything in red, we're in court. Everything white, we're in office. And this takes everyone, it's not just prosecutors, it's everybody. So we've had a hundred percent increase in cases. We have also added a new court, like Judge Sylvia mentioned. So now we're practicing in an additional court with all the JP courts as well. As you know, our county is growing and that means more cases, so we're on track to file about a thousand cases this year. We're also working double time because we are working on the backlog for twenty twenty. And I want to remind you that we are doing all of this with the same amount of staff. So I know y'all want to be worried about everything that we do, but basically, this is a list of all of it. We get cases from law enforcement, we make charging decisions, we meet with law enforcement. My staff creates a file. Each one of these is a person. This is a whole file. There is media in here, they're, they're thick. My office has to duplicate every single one of these if they have an attorney and hand that over. Each one of these represents a person that we have to talk to, or an attorney that we have to talk to. On any given docket, we have five to eight of these. So on those days that you see in red, this is what we're doing all day long. And the only other time that we have is those days in white. And those days in white, we're prepping all of this stuff. And that's just for dockets, for county court and county court at law, on top of everything that we're doing. I I'm very proud of this list, and I'll let y'all look at it, but I'm not gonna go through all of it because I think you understand uh the gist of it. I wanna talk about some new programs that we've implemented that I think are very good for the county. Uh the first one is the pretrial diversion program. This is a new program that focuses on giving a second chance to people on lower-level offenses um based on, you know, whether they have no criminal history. They still have to work for it, so they're still on a probation. They still have to um, you know, follow the rules for a certain period of time um and do some work, but it is beneficial for them for their criminal history. Um this keeps people out of jail. While previously, um I, it's my opinion that our office wanted to keep people in the jail, let them have these convictions. I I think that it's better to get them out. We don't need to be paying hundreds of dollars to house people in the jail. We need to get them out. We don't need to pay for them. And they need to have another chance if they are eligible. And if they mess up, then they can go to the jail and pay for them. Um so this saves prosecutorial and judicial resources so that we can really concentrate on those more serious cases that we're doing. And also, it does prevent crime in our county. Um another thing I wanna talk about, and I brought this up whenever we were talking about Bay or Attorney Point. Uh this is our victims options class. This was created by Terry Rose and Kayla Gonzalez in my office, but all of my prosecutors and support staff work on this. This is something that they came up with completely on their own. They do this outside of the office. They volunteer their time on Thursday nights every single month. Um they invite women and men, we've had men as well, who are victims of domestic violence crimes, who come to our court. And you can go through this, there's a ton of them. We 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 have domestic violence going on in this county, and it's bad. And these women have taken time out of their day to create this class where people can come and get resources and learn about it and speak with us. Um and then, then of course, we work with Bay or Attorney Point um for that as well. I wanna talk about the contributions um that we make to the county. Um all of our fines from county court and county court at law, with the exception of Texas Parks and Wildlife cases, all of those fines go to Rota Bridge. That's very, very important. Um so, you know, we really are trying to focus on making money for the county as it is, you know, appropriate for each case. Um we do jail pleas, so when someone's over in the jail and they can't afford to bond out, uh we coordinate with the jails so that we can go ahead and get a jail plea and get them out, again, saving money. Um you know, we're trying to give people second chances when when they deserve it or when it's appropriate. Um and we are getting tougher sentences on serious offenders because we do wanna have a safe community. I don't like people driving intoxicated on our roads. We have I-ten, very big. Um and if you ever wanna come see me in trial, Asher Sylvia, I I'm tough on people who who drink and and drive on the.
She's nasty.
I, yes, yeah, in a very nicely way with a smile.
True.
Yeah, yeah, do it at home, you know? Um and then, of course, you know, helping victims, like we talked about. We work with Bridge Haven, um which is uh a place that works with children um who have been sexually assaulted. Uh we we work with juveniles, so we deal with a lot of those, the juvenile offenses. So we go over to Bridge Haven and we sit there, try and say interviews. Um and then we work with Bay Attorney Point and with the victims options class.
And we did, if you don't know, we did have the first trial in county since January last year, two weeks ago.
We did, yeah.
And Kelly did a good job.
She did.
Did you enjoy your vacation?
We're gonna keep it busy. We really like to be in trial. I think that's great. For some cases, just can't be figured out. And uh we are not afraid to go to trial. We love it and uh glad people show up. Glad we have the clerks there to take care of us. Um so this gets me to my budget request. I I don't like to brag all like this, and I know that I'm moving so fast, but I wanna get it all out um before y'all, you know, zone out on me. Um but I'm so incredibly proud of my office. I I think these women and Charlie, poor guy, he's the only guy in the office, so definitely help him out. Um these are some of the hardest-working women I have ever met in my life. They are standing after, um I I literally have to go in and turn their lights off to make them leave. Terry Rose especially. And my girlfriend, turn your light off, it's time to go, it's five thirty. Um they work so hard. I wanna point out to you that if you look at the salaries at people who have the same exact job descriptions, you will see that my support staff is the lowest-paid in the county. And it just absolutely breaks my heart. These women work so hard. Uh the requests that I have made just get them to be equal with everyone that has the same experience and the same job description. I'm not asking for above and beyond, although I would love to, I would love to sit here and ask for ten thousand dollars for everyone. All I'm asking is for an equal pay for the women who are doing the same exact jobs as other people who are getting paid more. All of our staff is doing double the work that we did in twenty nineteen. And of course, across the offices, of course, but, you know, I I'm here to advocate for my my people. Um so they're doing twice the work, plus the victims' options, plus the pretrial diversion. And I think that they have more than that to. Um we've all had an increase in duties. Um so that is everything from me. I I sincerely hope that you will read the letter that I wrote. Um I know that I'm long-winded. I know that it did look like a book. I promise there's no tests in sharing it. Um but this is so near to my heart. And I think that um our office is very, very vital to the county. I just appreciate the time to be able to tell you everything that our office does. Um and I would really encourage you to come see us in trial, come come to our office. It's freshly painted, which I appreciate.
It's right down the hall.
It's right down the hall. And uh I will try not to talk this much if you come with me. Okay, y'all have any questions for me? Yes, sir. I knew you were gonna have a question.
What? So on your budget worksheet?
Yes, sir.
Uh your salary for twenty twenty-two is down significantly?
It is. You're only asking for eight hundred dollar increase on the sheet here, but you're asking for a lot more in here. We look at the budget worksheet, it's eight hundred dollar increase.
On which one?
No, this one right here. You dig your total, you're not.
No, look at.
Eight hundred dollars. If you look at your budgeted numbers, salary, uh you actually showing a.
Letter.
Yeah, so on on salary requests, I don't actually put them in the budget packet right here. It's on a separate lot uh packet I have in your folder. It's the blue tab. Don't even bother making why I don't, but. Uh yeah, so I don't, I don't.
I thought I messed up.
No, no. I I do that because it's in people can, you know, court can survive. And it's 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 I plan to go back and forth on it, so I just.
So other than salary increase, then her only increase is eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And that, um to explain, that eight hundred dollars is for victims options class. Right now, um we are providing food um and dessert, things like that for the people, for the victims who come. And we're doing that just out of pocket. Um so that's why I asked uh for just a little bit of questions that we can provide food to the victims when they come to our class. But everything else is just salary increase, and it's simply to get everyone equal.
Okay, so the twenty twenty-one total budget was one point one zero three. And your twenty-two budget is one point zero eight oh, which is down twenty-three thousand dollars overall from twenty-two, from twenty-one to twenty-two. That means a twenty-three thousand dollar in decrease.
That was Scott Peel version.
Yeah, you can, there's a discrepancy between the salary for county attorney from twenty-one to twenty-two. Uh yeah, it could be something that got rolled over incorrectly. I rolled it over from twenty-one, twenty-two. So, yeah, there's a little here and there.
Yeah, I don't know. So attorneys, attorneys, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so.
But it should be just a, eh, on here, you should, it should just be an increase of eight hundred bucks. Because those are eight hundred dollar increase, and then salaries are on a separate sheet in my.
Oh, yeah.
Well, here you gave, here you gave yourself a pay cut.
Yeah, um I would prefer not to do that. I do love my job, though.
So Aaron, that's Aaron's.
I use HR now.
I'll take what I can get.
Okay.
All right, thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
I hope you liked my presentation.
Thank you, House. Thank you, Ash.
Bye, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's in.
Don't worry about it.
Afternoon, guys.
I don't know, they're for him.
They're smiling now.
We're just smiling, Lee.
Who we doing next?
Pretrial services. Right there. Page sixty-two.
Yeah, Marissa, you were fine in my office for that hour and a half, and you did good, so just do what you did.
It must say, if you look on the titles, it's a bowl of grand. Trust me, it's pretrial services. This is the way it's coded in Tyler.
Page sixty-two.
Is this what they all have? I made copies for everyone, too, okay.
Let everybody get there, Marissa.
Oh, Judge, Aaron, you sir.
Hi, Judge. Long day, not over yet.
Hello, Dad. Hello, Judge.
I'm good.
Good, good.
Everybody there?
Yes, sir.
I'm Marissa.
My Sheriff's Judge, thank you for your time. Um I'm asking for very little. Just one part, I'm sorry, one full-time employee and then an increase on salary.
Marissa, would you share with the court uh what we discussed about your workload and your.
Yes, so like Ashley said, we have added an additional court. So we're now at four courts. Um and that county court at law is busy.
That's cuz it's all they do.
Yeah, well.
I mean, it's all they do.
District courts are busy, too, just as busy. So I am, I am in the courtroom. I should be in the courtroom. I also, um, okay, I'm sorry. What I do is, when someone's arrested and maybe they cannot afford their bond or that if they're eligible for my pretrial release bond, I can go get them out of jail. And to be eligible, it's a nonviolent, low-level offense, first-time felony. They have to qualify. They have to be eligible for my bond. Um so I get them out of jail, and I supervise them until they are sentenced. They report to me monthly. They pay a fifty dollar a month supervision fee. They pay, if their bond is ten thousand dollars, they pay three percent to my department, which would be three hundred dollars at fifty dollars a month. Fifty dollars a month, I'm sorry. So it's a total three hundred, that's it. Okay. So if I supervise them for three years, they pay until that three hundred dollars is done, and then that's it.
That's the max they're gonna pay.
That's the max, yes. Three percent. Yes.
Is that by law?
Yes.
How so?
Yes. So they report to me, and this also helps keep up with most of the time when, by the time they go to court, they don't show up. They can't be found. Their address has changed many times. The stuff, the letters the county clerk sends, visitor clerk, they don't get them. So I keep up with them. Every month, I make sure I have good contact information, and I make, I do my best to make sure they show up to court.
So tell us, for everyone you're supervising and watching, if they were in jail, how much would we be paying?
It's forty dollars a day, plus any medical expenses.
Ninety or forty?
I thought I heard fifty.
Forty.
I checked with them.
It is, yeah, it's forty dollars a day if they're in our jail. And. Yeah.
That's right.
That's a good point.
And so with adding a new employee, you could increase your workload by how much?
Right, I I could easily get. The main thing is that these these cases will be supervised like they need to be supervised. With me being in court, I can't take phone calls, return phone calls, return emails.
So you can only handle so many cases?
Yes. Right now, my caseload as of today, it's one hundred and seventy cases.
It's a lot.
I just got one more to this morning.
How many cases did you have when you were probation officer?
I never, I don't think that I ever got over one fifty.
Okay.
Direct, those are direct cases. Now, there's officers that have more. But for direct, that you see monthly, that's a lot.
Yeah, so we could expand with another employee to three hundred, maybe?
Yes. Also, last year, the um, they weren't arresting people. They were for low-level, a lot of possession marijuana charges. They were writing tickets, then the warrant would be active. It's coming active now. When people show up to county court at law, they have warrants. So they're being booked in, and I'm getting more cases. You just, they're arresting people now. Unless it's a jail. Yes, and right now, I think the jail is a hundred and five, I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty people. That's including here and outside Chambers County.
Uh I know she mentioned it, but she already collected about seven grand worth of these.
This this year. Total from, uh we started in November twenty nineteen, and it's seventeen thousand that we've collected total.
So seven grand this year, and so that's not even for half the year. Yeah, so fourteen, and if we could double the caseload, we could get twenty-eight thousand. And keep people out of jail.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this pays for itself more than pays for.
Also, I, I'm sorry, I'd also like to mention that I'm I'm now supervising um any monitoring devices. That's GPS ankle monitor, scram ankle monitor, ignition interlock, which is the major, the main one, and then drug patches. So when the JP's court orders bond conditions, they send those bond conditions to me, and I'm monitoring them for the JPs. And then, of course, for the district judges, too, and county judges, when they order them.
Can we charge their budgets when they do that?
Charge what?
Can we charge their budgets when we do?
Oh, we do charge, we do, I do charge a ten dollar a month monitoring fee for those.
Oh, you do?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes. Yes, sir.
Are all the JP's?
No, sir.
So she has a paranormal lab she has. So they come in now, six months, maybe a year later, restart the program. She monitors them starting with the first day of court. And so she, so she's saying to you, she has to be in court every.
So what do you mean the JP's aren't, some of the JP's aren't sent in?
During the last summer, a bunch of JP's seventy, kicked out a lot, and third, she come down. She was saying she got. She was saying she got in fourth offender, same charge, DWI felony, got another ten thousand dollars, and three weeks later, got another ten thousand dollars, so she had three pending felony DWIs. She appears still rocking, and we're not doing anything about the law.
So she didn't have a monitor, she wouldn't order a monitor?
She may have been ordered to have a monitor, we, there hasn't been any, I'm monitoring it now. I can, I'm only gonna speak for now, but when they're well, okay, so when the JP orders the monitoring bikes, I will normally
As a condition of bond.
As a condition of bond.
Yes, to make sure these guys understand.
They could be, it can be a surety bond, it could be a pre-trial release bond, either way, doesn't matter, I get those bond conditions, I'm monitoring that ignition interlock.
So surety bond, the money bond, or pre-trial release bond.
So if anybody's wearing a monitor that's from a Changers County
Yes.
conviction, or whatever, you are monitored?
Yes, charged, not a conviction.
Charged, charged.
Once there's, once you're sentenced, I'm done with them.
Then it goes to probation, if they still got that monitor.
Judge Carr's office.
It goes to probation now.
Judge Carr's office orders an ignition interlock from, in twenty eighteen. Now they're in Judge McDonald's court.
Right, he, he does it as a condition of bond, when he sets a bond at the jail.
So now, they're indicted, they go to Judge McDonald's court, I'm there with my form, and I, um, get all of their information because now I'm monitoring it, I'm taking it from Judge Carr's court. And I'm monitoring it from that day forward.
So about how many of those are you monitoring?
Ooh, I don't have that number, but it's growing, oh, fifty.
You, I was thinking the other day when we talked, it was, it was a big number, like fifty, sixty, something like that.
And those people don't report to me monthly, they do pay a, um, monitoring fee, because, oh, the different monitoring companies, they send the reports to me. I will then report to the DA's office or the judge's office, or Judge, uh, the JP's office. I report to them.
Yeah, me too.
Speak up, Dad.
There's no enforcement at all at the JP level, even if they do it right, there's no way for them to know. So her job at the JP is important, I mean.
It is, as a condition of bond.
But when I ran into the problem, why frankly, that I would bring the person up there and say, look, does anybody know that you can't drive? You don't have a valid driver's license in there, or, uh, one of these
Ignition.
On your car, it takes a picture. No, that's a digital drive up here. Yeah, that's where you're not driving back, you're done driving, condition of bond, put the monitoring on there. Everybody says thirty days, we corrected that in court, it's not
Yes, sir.
It's instead of now, not now, but it was supposed to be with the JP's. If the JP's, I'm not gonna make things, but someone obviously knew who the PC is. When someone don't, don't do it, and maybe they don't understand
That's what I was gonna ask.
Child, child passenger, when the DWI, the same thing, it gets monitored, actually more so. And so what she's representing, accurately representing, that with not only the ability to improve the population of the jail, we are better able to control the people on bond. With COVID, when it was, our cases, I have a move to try to get rid of it by year. There are forty-two news on, that all the people about to do it, the case didn't do it, and they're sitting on these bonds. And then all of the other things she does, whatever, decision, she lives her hangar life for people. Of the sex crimes, and other things like that, but she's not really on, she's going they reported to her, she reports, uh, we bring them in, what, I mean. And so we know where everybody is, it's supposed to be on there, some sort of
So, do all the JP's know?
Yes.
I assume they teach them, Larry, when you're supposed to have a condition of bond with a, um, with, with an ankle monitor, or or whatever it is on the car, and do they know to send it to you?
Yes.
Once they do that? That all they're doing it now?
Most are, yes, sir.
That's only been the laws since then.
I know.
How many? Three, one.
Four, or six, how many of the six, five?
So, yeah, it's been a while, but how long have they been sending to you?
Um, I, I think I went around and spoke to all the JP's, um, right before COVID, right, so I, I have a good relationship with the JP's offices.
So who's not doing it? Yeah, I mean
It's Judge Van De Benter's office.
Okay. I mean, we're not talking bad about him, which, I don't know why he's not doing it, so we need to yeah, we need to correct it, that's it. Okay.
She, we, we talked about she's been trying to pull this together better, so the people on bond, and more importantly, it's just what we mentioned, the people on bond are actually coming forward. And if they don't, we put out on our field, the restaurant, there's no bond. Ninety days, y'all don't wanna talk about when I said ninety days. Very custody, nine days, and then then died, it's a lot of them want to leave the city, that's why it's hard to get all my people to do our testing, rather than be there. And so they get, they get, the law tells people that they don't agree with, and I have to give them the order. They've become one hundred percent, y'all watch, one hundred percent.
Oh, I'm leaving.
She got a hold of it, we quit doing the order bond, much better.
I can say one thing. Filtering system she's created for us is just like in your job or anybody else, it's a filtering system. It helps us pick up pieces, or she picks them up from all that's coming in, because there's a lot, as you know, guys and judges, y'all see it all coming into y'all and be fried, we have them in the jail or whatever, she is the filtering system. And, uh, her job to me is very important, but not only that, integrity of her job.
So is there a form or something, once, when the JP?
For the bond conditions?
Yeah.
Yes, and Tammy Jenkins made a, a few forms, so they have one for just the ignition interlock, and then they have another form for additional bond, any bond condition.
I mean, they just check the box?
You just check the box, yes, sir. So, also, can I just, um, since we started in November twenty eighteen, two hundred and forty-eight people have been released on a pre-trial release bond. Gotten out of jail, and that's it, forty dollars a day. And like Judge McDonald said, if, a lot of cases, if they're in, they don't qualify for my pre-trial release bond, um, once they're in over ninety days, they have to qualify. So this is convicted felons, this is, you know, cases that may not normally uh, be eligible, but now I get them.
Well, and then another, another good thing about it, because she monitors them, and we both come home and
Yes.
Even if they were let out for the ninety days?
Yes. So I currently have one part-time employee, and she has, she will be taking a full-time job with probation, starting September first. So I'm losing my part-time employee.
When is she leaving?
September first.
September first.
I have her through August.
So will you bring another part-time in to finish out the year?
I will look for one.
And if this is approved, would you try to take that person that you want to hire to be a full-time employee?
I could, yes.
If that's it.
Yes, because I have a very low budget for my part-time.
You do have space for
Yes, well, I'm in the probation building, and we do have two offices. But like everywhere.
Yeah, we
Every, everyone's running out of room.
Yeah.
Okay, questions, what else, Marissa?
I've touched on everything.
Thank you, you did a good job. That wasn't so bad.
It was pretty bad.
Can I ask a question about her, her geographic coordinates? She, are, are you pretty much able to work out and out and work and stay here to do all of your
Yes.
work, because the court has us here, this courts, and, so you don't really have, you don't have to go? I was curious.
No, they, I mean, they come to me, I do go to the jail, and then I'm in court.
Okay.
All that's for protection, yes.
Yes.
You're very good about working with her.
Oh, yes.
I do a lot of Zoom here, at the jail, yes, and it's a lot quicker.
A lot safer, too.
Than having to wait for space, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I'm good, thank you, too.
Thank you, Marissa.
Thanks, y'all.
Great job.
Thank you.
I'll take a deep breath.
So the JP's are four, I'm going to do my art. Yes, they're four, and you're, you're, I think I'll start them off, and then again.
Yeah, let's take a quick break. Time's only ten minutes.
I'm great, I'm great. Welcome to the gap.
Hey, hey, Erin, tell Austin to shut us off. Are you doing it? Throw it against law.
Judge Drouin.
Hi, Court Attorney at the Reese Smiths. Uh, we are going to those JPs, the face twenty one. I see, so since Judge precinct one is new, I'm gonna let her watch the others so she can kind of get the. Get to know what's going on, hey Judge, 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 Judge.
She's had no grace, Judge.
And then. We're gonna go to. Let's see. Let's just talk about.
JP six?
Go JP six.
All right. What's been around the longest?
There, you're up, you're not saying.
You able to come up or stood?
You can come up and sit or stand or go from there, I don't care, as long as we can pick you up.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be. Uh, we thank you for the time for our meeting. We sent our packages in, I guess you have them in front of you.
We do.
And, uh. We, I, from our court, uh, you can see my numbers and what we, what we would appreciate simply is. Two step raise for each of the ladies in my office and then whatever percentage of raise, if that's the formula, I don't know what yet.
Well, we're hoping to give across the board, so.
Okay, so.
I would, you know, the plan is.
The other is, and I, I want to make a general statement to y'all about the mechanics of what we do quickly. I know you all know it because you're all computer literate. Some of us weren't when we started.
Yeah, we weren't.
Years ago.
What's a computer?
Worked. And the whole point is we, we, we have to have. And I believe we do have fantastic people working in our offices. This is not now about picking the phone up or reaching somebody at the counter and going to a drawer and pulling a ticket out and trying to figure it all out. It's not about that anymore, you know that. And you, you don't stay working in our offices for any of our offices, your offices are office. You better be snappy. Now, I won't include myself in snappy here because I'm not, but I just guarantee you I've got some good ones in my office.
My wife says I'm snappy sometimes.
They were unbelievable for what they produce. And the times have changed because we would have to have, my opinion is, we'd have to have double the employees in our office to handle what we offer.
You're doing that too?
You know, for our, in our, my one sixth of the operation of the JP situation, we would have to have a lot more help. A lot more time, a lot more error and all that, but the reporting is unbelievably, in my opinion, fail safe, almost perfect. I know there are mistakes made, but not always on our head, but what I'm saying to you is, I would like to see that everybody's. Turned their attitude for all of the offices in this community. The people that work in there that are totally committed to electronics, totally, there's no other option anymore. We don't, we don't, I mean, we do have summer help, which, eh, that's a good example, I'm not, I'm not caving in on the summer help, but I'm just saying, they can, they can greet people. They can answer the phone and put people on hold, yeah, and that's kind of what it used to be except for some of them, but the technology, but also now. The law of it's changed. You can have one person, as you know, make a mistake in your office, whatever it might be, we have one make a mistake in our office that don't, they don't know what the law is. And they can cause somebody superior to them in the office to spend three hours trying to straighten it out, and it's not really their fault, but they're big, we're getting trained. Getting trained as fast as we can, and, uh, I'm, I got, I just gotta tell you, I, I, I call one of mine boss because she's the boss, right, in our office. And I already had called her there, Tammy was flying out to Benton for a meeting, and we already had, uh, well, I better make a call from the airport a while ago. Because it was a question she'd been dealing with all day, and, uh, and, and another one that we dealt with, like. They had a double fatality in their court yesterday, and then we had a lady that died in the apartment with the, with the situation you're all aware of. But that, those, all those cases, uh, they, as you well know. Create and demand professional business with the public, the media calling and all the TV stations. They, they, they know when to talk and when not to talk. And what I would like to ask you about. Most, most important for me is, is the employees in my office. The other things that are on my list, as you can see on there, the auto, uh, deal, I would say on, in our office, I would give him forty six hundred dollars last year. Aaron knows all about it, uh, in my budget with, with the old car I got, it's a twenty twelve car, but I think we returned twenty six hundred dollars we didn't use. Out of that, and that included gas, tires, all kinds of things that went wrong, in fact, it wouldn't even run when I got it, they parked it. And it wouldn't run for two days in my office, but I'm not complaining, I'm thankful to have a car. What I'm saying to you is though, if I have a major problem, the twenty five hundred dollars for twelve months just won't work. It won't work, we're gonna barely make it if we're lucky on this year because of the gas increase prices, it's two sixty eight a gallon yesterday. So my point is, I, I would like to ask, and I'm being real personal here, and I don't mean to take up everybody's time, I think we're all in the same boat. We are. About that, but you see on mine there what we asked for, and if we lose a transmission, we lost a radiator the other day, we had to order it from Chicago. For my car because there wasn't any available, so, but we got the radiator in my car and that, that shot about five Phillips. Gasoline Phillips right there, so I'm, I'm getting, I'm, I may make it, I may make it under the twenty five hundred dollars.
Probably close.
And that's if I don't lose anything due. Again, I want you never, never to forget how much those cars mean to the JPs, because we do a lot, a lot of going. Especially if we cover, as y'all know, all down the port, Seagull, all that down there in the surroundings, and then we've been helping each other out back and forth, all of us. Judge Yale's gone, his wife is, I'm so proud of her, I don't know what to do. As, as far as that now, on there, I don't have it, let me look on my list real quick, and I, I want to bring up one other thing and then I'm gonna stop talking. I'm glad to know that you made your comment already, though, that you're gonna be across the board for some percentage, it is, that is correct. The jury thing, are y'all aware of what's happened to the juries now? In our budgets, if you had my budget laying in front of you, I don't know if we have it in that fact.
We got it.
But we have always had juries money, we, that's gone because it's taken in by y'all, you know, you've approved all of it. But, and I, we thank you for doing this because it takes that stress off our people, and we have court and we're fixing to have. A ton of all of them, we're all gonna have a ton of jury rights because they're piled up now. I think we, I'm not positive about this number, it was two fifty five, and I think it's closer to three hundred now, because we get a stack of lawsuits every day. Come in from UPS and mail, uh, new filings, and all we do is wait for it to knock to one of the jury, you know, but they do it, so. We're gonna have to deal with that, now what you set up, I don't need to go into all the mechanics of that, but it is really great. Because all we do now is send them an email, we need this jury group, or this number of jurors on this day, they take care of everything, send them to us. We're, we're not doing postage, y'all, that's going down against to the new budget, that, that operation, however y'all are doing it. But that, that money is going off our budget, so we don't, we can't even. Tap into it if we need it, and, and that's okay. Uh, I, I, I think it's a great thing, the jury system is really gonna be great for everybody.
Well, you gotta taste, you gotta taste it the other day, because that's how we did it for county court jury, when you were on my panel.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, we did it the same way, she, she, district, while you were there, you know, the district clerk pulled the names, told them we needed, worked very well.
Oh, I'm.
We cut him loose, he said, come help me, so, by the way.
She leaves me in the news, she disappeared, no, just kidding. She's a, I, I'm gonna take another minute and brag on her, but I, I cannot believe how that she has taken. The ropes and lead and, and gone after the problem, I think she did her first five inquest. Two of them, first she had helped, the others you done on your own. Night, middle of the night, whatever.
Well, you, you think we'd point somebody that could have?
Yeah, Judge.
Come on, man.
No, I didn't. That's why I'm here bragging.
Yeah, unanimously, that's right.
I'd like to add also that, um, that the statute only allows the county clerk, I'm the local registrar. Uh, for birth and death and marriage, and it only allows a certain amount of days for us to get that information done, and we appreciate the JP offices. Have really stepped it up on getting that as soon as you get it, because we are the ones that have the, the families that need those death certificates. Just sitting in limbo, waiting and waiting to file for a life insurance policy, all kinds of things. And so I commend your staff for staying on top of it. Every now and then I just have to do a reminder call, and that's okay, because I mean.
That's right.
You know, but I, that's a duty that you have to stay on, and they are good at it.
And, and this goes back to technology being, right now, with calls of text messaging and all those things we have from media, with investigators from the sheriff's department. And all that, we keep on the case, even in the middle of the night, we keep them back and forth, we get all the stuff solidified that we know she's talking about, that's gotta be done. For death certificates and all that before it gets away from them, once it's all, the families scatter out and can't find people. We can't get things completed, so.
And, and, and Jimmy obviously knows the importance because of probate as well, so, yeah, it, it's really appreciated what y'all do.
Um, not to take up any more time, but, uh.
You said that ten minutes?
Yeah. Hey, you only have five minutes.
I was watching your husband earlier today, and so I assumed that was what we were supposed to. Y'all know, sure.
Yeah.
You do now?
Yeah, yes, yes.
I, I think that's all for me.
Fine, thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Fine, going down the list, precinct five. And by the way, thank you for, since Marina's out these two weeks, thank you for covering, helping cover with it. Thank you for speaking. All things. Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I didn't mean thank you because I hadn't heard you say, it's a lovely, it's been y'all. Exactly, kind of did the same thing as Judge Pryor, uh, asking for a two step raise for my clerks, Autumn Poole, Maria Diaz, and Shelby Morgan. In which, as you just heard, you know, Judge Sylvia speak about Maria, Maria translates for my court. Judge Sylvia's court when Marina's out, and she's also in the process of becoming a certified court translator. So we're working on that, uh, because the county don't have one, and I know it's somewhat expensive if you have to have one come in. I figure, hey, uh, if we've got one on staff, be perfect, and so she's working on that.
We don't have enough translators, so, but I do appreciate it, of course, a lot of our calls are JP calls. They, they call the, the main number and then, you know, Marina gets them this year, but she explains to them where to go and what they do, so, and we don't mind doing that either, go ahead.
Also, just like what, you know, Judge Pryor spoke about with the twenty five hundred, you know, asking for eighty five hundred for the vehicle maintenance, price of gas. You know, the thing is, is if we're asking for this, we don't plan on using all of it. If we do use it, it's there. It's already allotted. If we don't, it comes back, goes back to general budget. It, you know, it's, it's allotted. That's what we're asking for. Uh, that way, if something does come up, it'll be there, we can use it. Uh, also traveling training budget, asking for an extra five hundred to help out with, you know, price. Sending uh myself, sending my clerks to training. Um, I've got one clerk that's not certified right now, but we're working on that. My other two clerks, they're both certified. Uh, in which that's what I, I push, hey, you know, you wanna excel, get certified. Uh, the same thing with law enforcement, you know, you got their steps. So I push the same thing with my clerks, their steps, you know, get certified. That's about it. That's, but uh also Judge Vandeminter's out of town, and he was asking for the same exact thing. You know, the two-step for his clerks, uh, the vehicle maintenance and so on and so forth, so.
Training.
Training, yes.
Okay.
I think most of the judges, I'm correct, were all asking for the same thing as for that. Oh, and chairs. But uh.
Trade them these chairs. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here, see, I'll show you some chairs.
No.
But I, I, I'll also throw in this right here, and I'm glad he's sitting in here and he can vouch for me. If it, if it comes to saving some money, I can, I can save some money. You can ask George. You know, I've, I've fitted out four complete offices in less than five thousand dollars. So I think that was very awesome.
Wow. Thank you, David. People won. Good job. Thank you, Judge.
All right. All right, you're five, four, we're blanking. Judge, excuse me.
Appreciate y'all's time, and certainly a huge honor to serve this uh county and this community. And, and really the only thing to add to what the other judges have already said is uh the increase in part-time salary. We were real fortunate this year. We really didn't have any, you know, long-term absences where we really were in a bind, so we didn't use a whole lot of part-time budgets. So we do need to bring somebody in and train them in the day-to-day activities. So if and when, uh, we do have some issues, we're gonna recover. And as, as the west side continues to, the population continues to boom, we're the only, we're the only JP department that has three clerks already. And so, uh, the ladies have done fantastic jobs down on top of it. You know, but bringing in some part-time help two, three times a week uh going forward, this is gonna be really important for our office to maintain, going through the increase of workloads that we're seeing. So that's kind of the only other thing I had to add to what's already been said. Questions?
Good, Tracy. Yeah, you guys ready?
Thank y'all. Well, I know y'all have a hard job. Your customers, you have to.
Customers?
Constituents. You know, I understand that.
I know you do.
I understand the cost of everything. I see it every day. One of the wages, supplies, every few, across that down the road. Hard to deal with. But the fact is, I mean, costs are going up. You know, we're, we're uh, the inflation is going up, I guess, faster than what we can keep up with. But uh, the main thing I wanna add to with the clerks is I think we were looking at above the yard, if they're, even if they're usually an across-the-board rate, we're really looking at a two-step rate above the board rates, across the board rates.
Yeah, and that's what they explained in there. It's there.
These clerks do a lot more than just their normal job. In fact, you know, there's calls come in. Every time an officer's out, you know, somebody asks them a question, it's called a judge. Everything gets transferred there. And then lots of times the judge, you know, or clerk, it's, it's something that they don't necessarily deal with directly. But have to be courteous, these people, because those clerks are representing you too in, in your constituents. They elect you, and we have to have good, common, uh, competent people that, that can be patient with these, because you get some really uh, we'll be tackling how to say this, you get some people in the line that can test your patience, and you've got to be.
Daily.
And, and calls, same thing, like it's officers, it's, you, these calls are out, I was totally called from this, I got passed on this one, that one, and by the time they get to you there, and these people have to deal with us, and test their patience. And so you really wanna have good, you wanna have, you gotta compete out there against the public, uh, private sector. That's hard to do. So I really admire what these clerks do. I'd like to see them raise. Uh, next one. Then, well, which you see what, asking for, asking for more extra in the budget for supplies. And of course, the data from fuel. Now, as far as me, I'm asking to have my budget put up there with the rest of JP's. I do the same thing, have the same duties. I have a tremendous amount of stuff I have for some cases and for some too. A lot of dead claim cases. But I, I get called out in the middle of the night, I, you know. Now, one thing I don't have a big, when I'm not cooking, I'm not, so, you know. And I use a big team of clerks, and I appreciate them. And that's another reason, I really, they do actually work for me. They don't have to. But I really appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judge. Any questions?
Thank you, Judge.
All right, Judge, today you're here. Don't be nervous. We're not nearly as mean as we are.
I think they've said it all. I'm back on a hundred percent on everything. Uh, my clerks, I think, are phenomenal, because they have really carried the weight of my office for a good while, before, during, and after, and now. And they're extremely patient and very bright, I'll say it, so I definitely second the raise for them. I mean, I, above, for me personally, the vehicle, I'm dealing with it. I mean, it's got another light on. Uh, we're gonna work through that.
Just turn it off.
I find the button.
You can reach it and burn it out.
Go out, forever.
It's still running. It's good. The H's working. I'm not. I, I mean, I just really would like to see the clerks taken care of. And I know there's a little issue about the chairs. But uh, I'm kind of confused why the purchaser left when my time was coming up.
Are you good?
I see him.
Honestly, I just think it just could look so much better. I know that they have to be stackable. I know that we have to allow for elections and other events that happen in there. So they do have to be moved and out of the way, and I think that we can kind of work around that situation. But they are literally metal folding chairs. We're in Chambers County on the back. And I mean, not long ago, they had a meeting in there, and you had text thought, and you had, uh, the water there. And it just like a picture, and it's just, I think it looks a lot more professional. So I'm just putting that out.
You wanna go out that door, and I'll, I'll, I'll run George to you.
Because I'm just, I'm just saying.
Well, we gotta vote you at first, so, yeah.
Whatever we can do. And uh, that's it. That's all I have.
Did you put that in your budget request?
Yes.
How many, how many chairs?
Um, I don't know. It's all I wanted.
What are your chairs?
You don't say how many.
That's all right. Just let us know.
You know, George does send out emails, and I did see some chairs he's giving away or not.
Hey, we can have about twenty. It's all mismatched.
Thirty chairs.
Thirty, okay.
And I think I allowed for like, or I was asking for new jury chairs.
Oh, there it is. I see it.
Attorney chairs, you know, so they feel all matched and everything. But yeah.
Now you're getting fancy.
I know. I'm sorry.
Trying to fancy your work.
I did try to find some lesser expensive ones. I really don't know what chairs cost.
That's okay.
Looking at them, it was, they were getting kind of pricey.
We don't know either. We haven't bought any in years. Just remember.
Well, I don't want y'all being too comfortable. You'll stay too long.
Well, well. You don't have to ask me.
Judge Sylvia thinks standers, when you put characters and P's together, so you gotta remember that.
Well, Captain Nelson sat in this chair for years, and he swapped it out when I came in. Judge, thank you so much.
I think I had a question. You had a question?
Judge, did you have a dollar amount for your step increases anywhere? I didn't see those.
I think she said two-step increases. So, we'll figure that out.
The same as everybody else's. Aaron figures all that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Step above what the across-the-board is.
Okay.
So at the bottom, it says what she's a pay group, so it, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, it's uh, all the base ups on your spreadsheet, salary, and I'm.
In the book.
Book, yes, sir.
Okay, binder. Okay.
Blue tab.
Blue tab.
Blue tab.
Yes, sir. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I would, I would like to see this in the, Heather, she knows, uh, all of us, but uh, take note of the fact, the only thing came out of COVID with your participation of our electronics is giving us more screens and things that we can see and do from our offices and not go out of camp. I told you a while ago, Tammy's on the plane and are already there now. That's a staple of the statement, not by us here, as far as our budget. Uh, she's on the committee, and she's up there in that denton. And uh, they called her, and they didn't even want her to drive a while ago. She went there, parked her car, and they, they were gonna pick her up in Dallas to take her out to Denton. I want you to understand, I have no idea how much money we can save. But as you know, we're not going to hotels, we're not doing anything that costs money. Everything is on the screens in our office, on the computers uh for all our webinars and good and all. I've done over a hundred hours that I, I, I'm talking about a little meat, which is a lot without spending one penny. Uh, I, I guess, I don't know about the cost of the program, but I think we have to pay them something for hosting those programs, but they're required. But so you'll know, I, I know you probably do, but all the hotel bills, even though it reduced rates by a gallon or sixty dollars a night for three hundred dollar room, but we always win the winner, as you know, freezing cold, all that fun. When I'm going in, but the point is, I want you to understand the impact on the finances of this county for all of our departments. Jimmy, all, all, everybody, commissioners require time and all that. If you don't go out, we don't spend out, so. Keep that in mind too, that we are, we have been able to cut, not intentionally, but we have cut by the law. And uh, I've got, like I said, this is my little corner, I've got several uh, webinars done without spending a nickel worth of gas or go, or meals on anything, so. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of what we've saved. And I don't know how much it is, but anyhow, you could, you got.
It's a lot.
You can get it asking on how much we haven't spent because of uh, someone say, I always find something for us to do, and then they wire us to do it, like they do. Thank you for your time. We really, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Anybody else got anything, JP?
One other thing I was wanting to bring up, and I think it was in the maintenance budget about, I, I talked with maintenance about getting our building painted and changed the name of it, because it's not a community building anymore. It's you know, precinct five justice center. And that's what I told them, I said, that's what we could call it, that if, you know, God approved of it. Uh, but just trying to, we got a brand-new fire station there, and it looks nice.
Yeah, it does.
And you turn around and look at our office and go, ooh. So, you know, I'm just trying to.
Mike, Mike, what was that?
Just trying to pretty, and there.
There you go. Let's get rid of the graffiti that's written.
You know why they put the fire station next to you? Just in case.
There you go, dude. All right, that's all I wanted to bring up as, as well.
We had a group here this morning. I can paint it for you.
Yeah.
One more word about translators. I know y'all mentioned translators. I'm not certain when we have a only Spanish-speaking person that's been arrested, and we have a trustee come in and be the translator, I'm not a hundred percent sure we're in compliance with what the laws say that we need to do with it. Uh, I think we're supposed to have probably a.
Certified.
Certified.
No, I don't think you have to have certified. Marina's not certified. She does all our court.
Yeah. If that's not a requirement, then as long as trustee's fine, I mean, I'm good with it. I'm not trying to raise trouble. I just want to fill that.
And there are services available, even if you just need to get somebody on the telephone line.
Even though it's expensive, we got a murder suspect.
That'd be a question.
All right.
Judge, Judge. That's a question for Ashley.
Yeah, you're right.
You can ask our county attorney that.
Either they're a training center.
Yeah. But we can get legal advice from county attorney too. All right, anything else?
Good thought, good thought.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
For your time. I know you had a long day.
It had been long. We got five minutes for the next one, so you'll get a break.
Where's Kevin? Well, I didn't know it was closed over there.
How's your knee, Judge?
But they are on me whenever.
Judge, how's your knees?
Knee?
Yeah.
It's good. The other one I've been walking.
Yeah. Of course, Judge Sylvia do two at one, you know.
Increases of the people that I asked for, but several of those are, are actually everyone that I asked for is way below what the new people are coming in at that were hired. They're below that dollar amount that we're hiring in new help. Um, and that, that was about, actually, I can't remember off the top of my head, it was about six, seven employees plus the ninety-two hundred uh increase. Uh, the two thousand was the uh YPS secretary with uh we added ranch radio and I think it's been like a five year without a Barrett race. Uh, the park secretary has taken on uh extra duties as well. Um, actually, we were just talking about that's the building rentals that she's taken over and also helping out more with the youth projects. And that was a thousand increases. Uh, on capital. Uh. Mainly the capital was our stag lawn mowers. There was uh four of them because I didn't receive any in uh twenty twenty-one. Uh, we were kind of on a program where basically every year we were getting two new lawn mowers and swapping out old lawn mowers. So I've asked for four because I didn't create a capital budget for last year. Uh. Pickup trucks. I think we've asked for three. We have a lot of old trucks. They're two hundred thousand miles, some of them close to three hundred thousand miles, uh constant repairs. A big portion of it is, is a lot of what we have still in fleet is gas. Uh, the heavy trailers and the heavy equipment that we're pulling, they're just really not enough to really get done what we need to get done without tearing them up. So that was the three trucks. I think one of, actually, one of those was a bathroom truck, which has, I just checked the mileage, has two hundred thousand miles on it. And we just got it out of the shop with a pretty extensive repair. Uh. The toll bed box would be for the bathroom truck is branded. Uh, it's one of these uh decks pullout drawers where she's not having to reach over the side of the truck and actually George will pull out. That was right at two grand whenever I had it um quoted. Uh. The airports, we, I know that the airport manager is working on trying to get some of the airports taken over for hay. Uh, but at the time, we're almost four or five days just mowing each airport besides the landfill. And the bat wing modern cutter that we have, uh, we've put quite a bit of money into it and still got a vibration and actually created a ten thousand dollar repair on the John Deere tractor that we have, broke the PTO shaft off in the tractor. So I'm trying to run two bat wings. We have a lamb ride running now, but I'm trying to get another one and try to help keep up with the airport mowing.
How many bat wings do we have?
We have one.
What about the landfill parade too, is it?
Sir?
What about the landfill parade also? Is there no, no grass out there probably?
I would have to talk to Eddie because he's kind of talking about some new compliances that he's having a meeting. So his areas, I guess, that he has not put trash on, those have to be known. I don't know if we can let those grow to where they can cut hay.
Would you make any time?
I, I.
Because if we do, we can add that to the airport.
That would be, I mean, like I said, that would be good because it takes us over a week with a fifteen foot bat wing just to mow the landfill. And to keep them in compliance. And basically by the time we mow the A and Y airport, the Wayne airport and the landfill with a little bit of weather in between, it's time to start right back over. So my tractor guy, he ain't doing nothing but those three things, whereas if I added a tractor with another battling, he might be able to help get on a scag more and do some of the other county property, you know. But I do know, like I said, I'm asking for that bat wing just because of the damage that it caused to one of the tractors with a vibration and we fixed some of it, but the vibration's still there. Uh. Next is, I'm gonna start out with, I call it the park sixty by forty tractor shed, but I'm asking for the same thing at White's Park for youth project show stores. Right now, we have everything that we use to run the youth project show crammed into two eight by forty connects. And it literally is from floor to ceiling and wall to wall. And if we gotta get something out, we gotta dig half of what we don't need out of the.
To get it.
To get to what we do need.
So, did you, did you ask for that or you just?
Well, I added it in later.
Okay, you've added. That's fine. Aaron, we need to look hotel motel for that one.
And that's what we had talked about, but I was told to go ahead and put it into my budget.
Well, yeah, it still needs.
But it could be hotel motel funds because of the bio and everything else, plus the projects they're bringing in the uh extra stuff to the calendar. Uh.
There may be a little more of this that we could divert there. Need your mowing. Oh, White's Park, your mowing. You know, Joe Beeson, your mowing for down away, I guess.
And we mow for the most part, if it's a park or uh county building, we mow that with our scag. It looks a lot better. Uh.
Yeah, I'm just thinking some of these could be paid for out of hotel motel.
You thinking we could justify a couple of skags because of mowing?
I do. I think we need to look in.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have. Mm-hmm. There's a lot of parts on the water.
Serial, Fort Anawak.
Yeah, we probably got more on the water than we do off of.
Devil Bio, there's another one. That's a big part. White's Park and Devil Bio probably are two biggest ones to take.
But thank you.
And Fort Anawak.
Thank you, Chris. That's gonna, y'all, he's right. It looks so good when it's manicured like that.
White's Park and Fort Anawak, it's a minimum of five skags all day to mow them.
Compliment.
Really and truly, it's better if there's six and then they get some trimming and some weed eating and fine tuning everything. But it's a minimum of five per park and it takes all day.
Wow, I didn't know that.
We actually don't.
How many times in a month that?
We try to catch all of the county's property every week.
Every week.
But there is like two small pieces of property or one large mark that's not got to just because of the time that it takes to do everything with all hands on deck. So we actually don't get all of the county's property mowed in a week's time. Almost.
Most of your part-time help in the summertime?
Most of our, well, our, well, I have one guy that comes in part-time. He just retired in two thousand twenty. But I get him back during the summertime. And then right now, this year, we were allowed summer kids. I have three kids for summer. I think that I'm fixing, well, I don't think, I know I'm fixing to have one more retire, but I think he wants to come back as part-time as well.
That's good. Hang back doing your.
These guys, you know, I'm trying to keep because they're dying breed and now you don't have anybody that cares about our property like they do. Uh, but I know I have one for sure. I think I might have two. And then probably by the end of next year, I'll have another. Uh, but I kind of up my part-time salary because of that, if I can get him back. That's why I asked for the part-time uh bump. I'm not for sure ten thousand is enough, but that's why I asked for that. I know we do have a part-time budget, but I wanted to add to it just to make sure that if I did get that guy back, that I would have a little bit of money in that account. So, yeah. Uh, and then we're talking about the sixty by forty shed for, for storage for White's Park, but I had also asked for basically a sixty by forty tractor shed at the shop. Uh, one, I'm wanting to be able to put some of our expensive equipment under shade. Uh, your equipment lasts longer. The sun, you know, does a lot of damage more than what we know. But also to try to create some more storage for just some of the lawn mowers because we use our main shed now uh to make our own repairs. And with everything that's in there, we don't have much room to make those repairs. So if I can get some of this stuff put into another shed, then that will create a little bit more room for us to work on some trucks and trailers inside the shop without having to leave equipment outside. Because some of these repairs take more than a day, two days, three days. Lot of cars welding, you know, tearing a lot of stuff apart, so just need some more storage out there for multiple reasons. And that about covers everything that I have uh on the list here. There's a few things that, like I said, I added beyond that. One uh was, I believe, ten thousand dollars for McCollum Park. We have the uh the rock shale road that goes down below the hill for your kayak people and your fishing people to get down. Um, I think the only true solution to fix that erosion problem is to put down hot mix asphalt to where it's not gonna erode and we're not gonna continue to put down rock.
Weren't you looking at grant for that?
We are, but uh I just asked him to put that on there for, so we could get that erosion fixed.
And a lot of what, you know, I was, you know, putting in here was hotel motel, but just wanted basically brought to.
It's gotta be budgeted one way or the other.
The budget.
Hotel motel.
Correct.
So you have these.
And then also uh the need for some better way, safer way for those people that uh do launch kayaks at McCollum Park to get across those rocks, so. Um, thinking something like what we put in Devil Bio, some kind of a ramp down to a floating kayak launch where it's safer for those people to get their boats in and out of the water.
Yeah.
There's actually quite a few people that kayak.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of rough right there at the bottom.
When I do, it, it, it is, and it's, it'd probably be a little bit different type of project. I tried to get Crawley just to kind of shoot me a number. And I hadn't gotten, I hadn't heard anything back from him. But I think in eighteen, I think, actually, I think it was nineteen, we spent thirty thousand on the kayak launch at Devil Bio. So this would require probably some concrete work, concreting over the uh Bull Rock, uh Bulkhead and then down to a floating dock. So I, without a number, I just kind of bumped it high to fifty thousand just to make sure that we have enough to cover the project.
Well, there's definitely grants for water access for boat launches and kayaks and parks and wildlife has.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure that Sam's aware.
She, she, she working on grants for both those sides.
Okay, good.
So, and I talked to Billy. Billy and I went and looked at McCollum Park and discussed it and he was a little bit preoccupied with road projects, so I told him I would kind of follow up on that. And then I got with Kurt, so.
Appreciate it, Jack.
Yeah, we're looking at that. I went over and I sent uh Kurt some pictures from Bayland Park. They're very nice floating kayak launch facility over there.
I have to get you some pictures of the one in Devil Bio. It really actually turned out to be a really nice project.
So, I mean, years ago, I talked to a lot of parks and law about that money they couldn't give away for boat ramps.
They still do. They wind up with about twelve or fifteen million a year that nobody claims.
Yeah, so we need to go after those.
So, money just, it just sits there. They never use it, so. We can fix that.
Yeah.
So, if anybody can get it, Sam will figure out how to get it.
Oh, she's good.
Yeah. So she, yeah, she's all over. We can't apply for a grant till, I think, January, January, February. Uh, but she's trying to put all package together and make sure we have everything we want, so also working on boat ramp over on northwest side also. So, also working on boat ramp over on northwest side also.
The only other thing that I got that was kinda re-brought to my attention, I know we have a lot of the ball fields and stuff going on, but AMDD has been contacting me. And they have a hundred thousand dollars that they're ready to get rid of, but towards that splash pad man. I know we got a lot of stuff going on. I know I have a solid updated number on the splash pad. I wanna say it was somewhere around. Two hundred thousand back in two thousand nineteen. But they're really looking forward to, they're looking forward on that project. They got a hundred thousand dollars if they wanna put towards.
And I suppose they also indicated they might be interested in paying water bill. And also sent water rates from Trinity Bay, what we're doing in Reenie to. The mayor of that ranch. He was putting that on his agenda to discuss with his board about matching that rate.
I know about what we're spending on a wing splash pad per month, which is busy. Around thirteen hundred dollars a month. But just, that likes it, that wasn't on my agenda that y'all knew about, but AMDD has come to the same town, so. They're, they're kinda scared to keep on holding on that money. They really wanna put something into the Anly area. So, uh, we have two playgrounds, we'll fix and do the ball field, so that was. One of their projects that they would put that money to.
What, what group is that?
AMDD is Anly, I mean, is full of development district.
As I, we can match it down the hot fund, get them to cut the water rates and pay the water rate, it'd be pretty good shape.
Well, see what you can get together more specific before we end up.
I'm like known, uh, craftsmen to shoot back a solid number, but I have been in contact with them, so.
I know it's been talked about for several years, so if we're gonna do it, I need to.
The pier, I've heard, I mean, I haven't walked down there, but I've heard the pier was in disarray, like it needs work.
The boardwalk.
The boardwalk, thank you.
They redid the actual birdwatch part of it, that's in good shape.
Right.
But nothing has been done to the boardwalk itself, except for what a little bit has been caught on fire. That has been repaired, but we are constantly having to replace. One, two, three, four boards at a time, which we have been doing on a. Weekly, bi-weekly, monthly basis, just trying to go down there, evaluate what's rotten, we tear it out, put down new. The bottom structure, I think, is in good shape, it's just the top. Uh, you know, once again, sun weather, everything that takes the beating, so I can't even remember what year was that put in?
I was putting it out after Judge Nelson passed away, cause we named it the Austin House and Boardwalk. So it was late nineties.
Walk to that is that old, and then since the birdwatch part of it was burnt, that's new.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that the county's not, um, in a, in a place where we have a lot, huge liability with that.
Yes.
Boardwalk.
Now, we constantly go down there to walk that, make sure.
Yeah, not only that, but we got a facility and we wanna be proud of it.
When you saw the thing that goes out into the water, the pier?
The pier itself.
Uh-huh. Have you checked that lately? I just keep getting these weird texts, and it's only because of, there's somebody that was really a good friend of mine. Not here anymore that, you know, and they're like, have you seen the pier, dah dah dah, I'm like.
And both boat launches are brand new. They, uh, Crawley's just got their redoing. The pier was the last project, I believe that was finished up in nineteen.
It was right before a plane crash, after.
Correct. And it has the, the real nice plastic. Grading for the floor. Uh.
The junky check.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I want to make.
Biggest problem that we have down there is the lights and people not knowing how to throw a lure. They bust those lenses out all the time.
I hadn't done an efficient problem.
So that's one cost that we do have is fishing poles smacking the lenses on the lights and busting the lights out if it's not handled. Which is a big problem.
Here, a question for you, looking at, uh, parks totals here, and I realize it doesn't include, include the rate increases. But it looks like an eight hundred thousand dollar decrease over the last year.
Well, cause last year, there was, uh, well, there's, you know, the baseball field.
We budgeted a million dollars for, uh, for down away.
So it's two hundred thousand dollar increase if you couldn't get out of it, right?
Yep. I think we had two point five for all capital projects, I think, budgeted the, the last one.
Yeah, he has one point one, one, it, one, one point one, twenty one, twenty.
Actually, it wasn't on my list, but I think the only other thing I just thought about was, uh, the playground. That I'm asking for, for White's Park. And it would be a premiere, they shot back a number, but they've kinda grown the project more beyond just the playground. So it could be phased out, but if we do everything that they've grown up, which is a parking lot, sidewalks.
Yeah, who's that?
Craftsmen. Uh, Billy.
Sorry.
I think. If we took away sidewalks, extra covered area, you know, everything besides the playground. If, if it was just the playground itself, it would be about six fifty on it.
Thank you.
That's a huge playground, that's light winnings, it's the port and place molds that you don't have to replace. I think I just spent ten thousand dollars, um, actually coming up on molds to get. All of our playgrounds back up to, uh. Just enough, basically, Uyo is out, Gregory is out, Smith Point is all out of molds. So we, we just spent ten grand just on molds alone for four, uh, parks alone. And one of those has only been four years since we filled it with molds.
Have we, um, have we got anything budgeted for next year so far out of hotel motel? We can look at some of this. That's a big issue though, so.
I said, it was, it is a huge playground, it's a barn thing. I said, it is the nice molds. Where you're not gonna be replacing it every five years like we are now and spending several thousand dollars just to replace what was there. I mean, it, it is the way to go in the long run, it will save money, but yes, it is a very expensive upfront cost.
So how much more is the port and place molds versus the regular molds? Well, I agree, but it's, is, is that the main expense or is it just the playground?
If you were to spend ten thousand dollars on molds for in place, it's probably like four.
One time.
So it's probably about three times.
That's something we need to start, keep thinking about, get in our mind.
Right. I agree.
Do away with it ongoing expense.
Yeah, but we need to start thinking about what we're gonna do over off of Chambers Parkway. We gotta get a park fixed up there.
I wouldn't, I hadn't talked about this here, it was hot from this here.
And that's, that's kinda why I brought it up.
Well, we're gonna dig a big ditch beside that and put some water on it.
Kilgore Parkway, it's gonna have the water standard.
That was.
I mean, Kilgore.
Drain it to a hot fogs project.
I'm just trying to get something nice out there, cause we're finna have a thousand houses out there before we know it, and those people are coming out of that.
We already got two thousand there, though, so.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just talking about.
I'm not for sure how many are all went in that sudden movement and how many more, but my biggest thing is, is that park, we've had that for. So many years and there has never been anything.
The back of our course never been touched, nothing.
Nothing out there.
Well, we need to, we need to work on all our parks.
All of our parks, we have never had anything, that's basically what my goal is, is to get these parks that don't have equipment. To give us some equipment. We did a good job last year.
Yeah, before we, before we make all them pretty, let's get one park over on the far west side. I don't care, I want part.
Hey, uh, we was gonna utilize it.
Huh? No, McCollum Park's a nice park. Yeah, and we can't, and it, it, it is.
Yeah, and driveway.
Still, the six hundred fifty thousand is a whole lot of money for.
It is.
A playground.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I think we looked at something different. Yeah, but those.
It's about six fifty or so.
I think each phase of Safari was like three months ago.
But I don't know if we're doing this for, I mean, there's other nice playground sets that.
But I might do it, I'm, I wanna get some stuff out there. I don't know when we're gonna, you know, start clearing that property that me and you went and looked at. Off of Old Middle Point, which will be the.
P D K's working on it now, as far as the plan goes, and you know, it's.
Hey Billy, who's gonna sell that land off at one forty six and utilize that money for that? Where we at on that?
You know, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm not so sure I want to.
To sell it?
Yeah. You know, because actually that's a very good location. I'm not convinced being on the. Moving everything to that other land, first of all, with sixty acres and you put the ball fields on, no, ball fields take up a whole lot of land. Then you got the community, you got all the parking and stuff that goes with it. I'm not, I'm still not one hundred percent convinced that not putting. A new community building on one forty six and putting it over there is the right idea. You know, at one forty six, we've got plenty of land, we could expand right beside where we are. It's. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not convinced that's the best way to go.
I think he was talking about selling the.
Oh, Victoria, oh, it's for sale now.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, we was gonna utilize that money to build on any park.
Right, and we should get a few hundred thousand dollars now that. I, I'd have to call, uh, have you heard from your sister email?
I mean, we was gonna sell that.
It's listed, I haven't heard, so obviously there's not a lot of interest in it.
Those, uh, what, they'll building in Mount Beverly, Judge, I mean.
Yeah, we got a little bit of.
Stole City Hall.
Yeah. The task force.
Yeah, stole City Hall.
Yeah, I mean.
Back when I.
Oh, I thought you were talking about selling at one forty six.
Now, it's been done something with, correct? We stopped mowing that.
We sold it.
Okay.
Yeah, we sold it.
Yeah, the guy.
Yeah, don't, don't.
We didn't know, we set it up to mow it, and they're like, what are you doing?
Sorry, we should have notified you when we sold it.
So, uh, but we found out and we stopped.
As I was trying to earmark some of that money for parks over there.
Yeah.
Some questions, uh, why do you have a dozer in your fleet? Were you utilizing that for?
I have to ask from my business. Uh, we had a lot of dozer work to do, and we're still have more to do. Uh, and the, the cost of the rent, what we were paying for one. We were gonna come close to paying for over half of it and what we needed to do. In that year, in the rent and the delivery fees and so forth. We, we have utilized it a lot. We've been running down to Smith Point, trying to take care of some of that boat ramp issue with the dozer. We have done all the dirt work. Actually, I think really and truly that wasn't on us, but we did it. But whenever they added on to the Cove, uh, fire department. When they dug all that out from the first building and then the spoils left from the second portion of the building. We took care of all that dirt work for them. I think it was supposed to be held off by the contractor. Uh, but anyway, we use a dozer for that. Uh, at Beach City, there was some spoils put in the back, I don't know exactly where they come from. Uh.
Came from cutting that road in to get to the tower.
Is that where those spoils come from? So those were piled up in the back. Uh, we utilized the dozer to do all of that dirt work, so. In Rimmel time, we, we paid for more than half of what that dozer is that we actually own. That's one of the reasons that I'll ask the push shed and try to cover that and get more storage. So we had to utilize that dozer quite good. I do let Eddie utilize it at the landfill. Only to push dirt, I did not let him put it in the trash.
Good, that's a good deal.
I, I, we, we.
Doesn't he, does he use that for his roads?
He uses that for his road and only when he's capping a, uh.
Sale.
Sale. But I would not let him put that dozer in the trash. It's, it's just. You got a trash dozer, you just leave the trash, but when you got a dozer to do dirt work, we just, we utilize it for just strictly dirt work. So, other entities have made use of the park dozer besides us. But we're careful of what we make it do.
So, okay, my other question is, is there a piece of equipment available that? So I went down to, uh, Ford Anaway the other day. So, you got five mowers down there, and they all getting it, no doubt, but. Uh, is there, is there another piece of equipment that's, that's more. Uh, efficient that we can mow that, like fifteen foot, I mean, or. Is there something we can get?
Down the hill, we utilize the fifteen foot back wing depending on the ground because of the tides. But we do run the fifteen foot all the way down Levy, uh, on the point, on the sides and back, coming back up. The only thing that your skags mow is the park up top, and then they mow, of course, around the boat ramp where it's level ground. But they'll all make their pass to go, they, you know, line up behind each other and they make four or five. Lawnmower wide going down Levy Road, they mow the park that is groomed, you know, more so than what a tractor would do.
Yeah.
And then they make their five lawnmower pass on the way out. They do not mow the full width of Levy Road with the skag. But we do run the back wing down there when it gets done there.
Heard, I'm gonna brag a little bit here, I mean, we've added a new library on anything, we're still mowing old lumber. We're adding a new west side complex, plus land on Needle Point, plus everything else. I don't, I think we've only taken that one building off of you. You're still covering everything, plus went back to mowing the airports, which you was off of for a while. And you know, still covering it with the same manpower and the same machines, so I give it to you.
I agree. I don't have any doubt about that.
And right now, we, we really need to look at it. We've, we're adding a lot of new, uh, drainage right away and stuff, and we've got road and bridge doing that now.
Yes.
But I'm not so sure it shouldn't be turned over and we switch that stuff over into parks, cause they, honestly, they do a great job.
We looked at that.
We looked at.
We may wanna look at it again.
We have that, we have that off-road crew that we can take care of that does all the mowing. I mean, he's got two fifteen foot back wings. Plus those, uh, little front mowers that we bought, plus the spray rigs.
And it does a good job.
I don't know if they've been continuously mowing in wide ways this year or something, need to check on.
We're not keeping up with.
Well, I mean, and that's something we need to look at, cause I mentioned after court the other day, and I don't think they realize that they're supposed to continue to mow that.
Yeah.
So, but, but everybody's being added to road and bridge.
No, a- absolutely.
Parks, I mean, so.
Yeah, it is, and we just, we gotta look at ways to be more efficient.
And it is just in the beginnings, dude.
But to answer, to finish answering the question, we do use that fifteen foot more down, down Levy more than just. The lawnmowers is while they're making a trip down there to groom the, the nice grass. And then they make their pass out, so at least the sides and roads are being the scag, and they're not just making a wasted trip down there. But we do utilize that back wing as much as possible.
You use six foot cut?
Uh, our shags are sixty one inch cut.
I know you don't, I know a lot of people want like seven foot cut cause they dig in.
The seven, the seventy shoes.
They don't cut as deep in.
Real careful. If you get any kind of an ant mound or crawl at hole, it does flex the blade down. If you hit any kind of an ant mound or crawl at home, it does flex the blade down to the ground. We had two seventy twos. And since then, we have converted them to sixty ones. They were really made for ball fields, but. As we all know, our ball fields are not exactly level and that's kind of what we're doing, what we're doing, but I mowed one of the seventy twos to help keep up. You have to drive much slower and it just don't cut like that sixty one does. So really and truly, by you backing off on speed. And the time that you have to take, it's not worth the extra cut.
We fixed to have some good level ball fields too.
You have to have perfect ball fields.
We're about to have some.
So.
And I know we're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna have to add credit to parks.
Yes.
Complex, I mean, good news is replacing four ball fields in two areas, but then you got eight new ones and.
Well.
Even with the new replacements, there's gonna be more maintenance.
When it rains, you know, we did get behind and when we don't, when we can't cover the full downy and then we deal with all the rain we deal, been dealt with. We definitely need some more now.
Well, I like.
If I can get my guys back as part time.
I like, I like the part time.
I love hiring my old ones in if they're willing to come back. But everybody that I've got back, and we talked about coming back, there's people that I don't want to lose the first time.
Especially, you know, mowing seasons are like greater. And you grow well and, you know, it's not year round. So part time help.
Almost, we don't stop till about the end of October and we probably start.
Yeah, but you know, it's not as intense.
No, we actually turn down and cover our grants.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's intense right now with the heat and the rain.
Yeah.
Shit, I can't keep on my yard. All right. Anything else? Cause I'm fixing to, I'm on overtime.
It's comp time, Judge.
No comp time, I said.
Comp time.
Kurt, you got anything else?
I like getting.
Appreciate it, Tony. Appreciate what you did.
Ah, you did an awesome job on YPS two.
Yes, I did. Absolutely, yeah.
Well, that, we are adjourned at whatever time it is.